To your question, yes Casey, I did say, hey, we're going out for food.
You know, and I told you I was gonna order pizza.
Yeah, and the second they left-
If any of them actually come tell me that they're actually-
Yeah, yeah, the second they leave, we say, or at least I will, uh, say, uh, while they are leaving, we are following them because we are very sure they are going to get ambushed and we just gonna-
Hey, we're kinda hoping to get ambushed.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't think we're gonna get ambushed.
Well, I mean, assumptions is the mother of all fuckups.
That's your hope and we have our hopes.
Exactly.
I'm not even certain that they'll actually be able to follow me.
I mean, we want, you want to be followed. Why would you try not to be-
Specifically.
Yes.
Warner.
We if-
I have my phone on me, Harm can GPS it.
No, yeah, but if you, if you do the whole lose, do I have a, do I have a tail and lose it and stuff like that, then you won't be tailed by the people we're trying to catch.
Well, if they're being tailed by suspicious people, then we're tailing as well.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll just see them tailing and go, oh, hey.
Yeah, now, if I'm, what I'm saying is, if he's difficult to tail, we won't be able to figure out who's tailing him because they won't be able to tail him.
Look, let's just, let's just tail him while he tails us. And it'll all be good.
He drives around in a circle.
Yeah.
If he cares enough to come and kill her, I believe they'll probably try and find you.
I can't understand why anyone would care enough to kill a stripper.
Well, no, they care about killing the squid.
It's not like, it's not like they're real people.
More she's just a squid.
Yeah, they care about the squid and want to kill the squid.
Still think this is a stupid plan, but let's go.
It is-
Just checking real quick, are, any of our orders didn't happen to send a team of assassins out, did they?
Oh, yeah, I mean, you know, my, my bunch sends out teams of assassins all the time.
We are.
Well.
We're a group of people that are supposed to kill the guy in charge of this.
Yeah, but we're not specialized assassins in each order.
Oh, no, 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 ev- everyone-
You're not?
Everyone in my order is a specialized assassin, didn't you know that?
Yeah, didn't, di- You're not? You're not?
How were you, how did you get this job of an artist called assassin?
Uh, I didn't realize assassination was a qualification.
How did you, uh, what are you doing here then?
That's a good question.
I mean, I figure if anybody had the assassin training, it was the guy that took a pot shot at the mermaid's head.
Obviously, you-
Assassination and more.
Obviously, you went-
Pretty sure you just- Go ahead, Casey.
Obviously, you, you went like the sniper school kind of assassin training, whereas, you know, I went kind of like the James Bond, you know, sleep with her and then kill her if you have to kind of training, but, I mean, I, I figured that was still.
Hey, I just punched a werewolf to death, I think I'm pretty alive.
One movie with the assassin that does all the stupid stuff, Mr. Bean or something like that? You, you went to that assassin, there's my target, I'm shooting it in the head now.
Hey, it worked out.
No, it didn't.
Sure.
It's debatable, we all lived, it's debatable.
He got my phone destroyed and I didn't score, score with him.
That was not my fault.
It was completely your fault.
No, no, it was your fault for not holding on to it.
I did hold on to it.
Wait, the same thing happened with the stripper too?
You shot.
He didn't, he didn't get to score with her because he couldn't hold on to her because he jumped out the window.
No, that was your fault for my card.
Is this my fault you left your card?
Yes.
No.
I'm sure it is.
I'm sure it's not.
Sure it is.
I'm sure you're crazy.
It was you that got us all running out of there.
Hmm, no.
Yeah, it was.
Well, actually, what got us running out was the hail of gunfire that just came from the room. But, you know.
But aside from that, it was your fault.
Sure, I will accept responsibility.
There you go.
You probably wanted to do model of phone anyway.
You guys are too squishy, we need to stop being so squishy.
There's something wrong with all of you.
Not wait for Mad Men, but we are gonna-
Well, there's definitely something wrong with you and his crabs.
I don't believe you, you're not even here, so what are we talking about?
I'm back.
Welcome back. We're arguing as we get in the car to tell them for this stupid plan.
Oh, I thought this was an argument we had previously.
No, I-
Previously and now.
You're, you're separate from all of this though, yeah.
You're right, I have your date.
I said I was done with her.
Back. So, what's happening?
We're following your stupid plan and following them. Who's driving?
Chris Leo.
Leo is, you're a senior citizen.
What the hell does that mean?
You're a senior citizen.
What's that got to do with me not being able to drive? I'm mentally young.
You were like gone for a whole day, like mentally, like I was waving my hand in front of your eyes and you like-
I was-
Drew.
You just see him fluster up and, and get really angry at the steering wheel.
Look, it's already a stupid-
Exactly like that.
It's already a stupid plan, we might as well let the old idiot drive.
Sure, but if he's having an episode, I promise I will tug and roll.
I do not wait for them to follow me.
Perfectly stable, I remember driving carriages.
I'm, I'm going on my, on an app on my phone to update my will as we get into the car.
In the case of my death, tell these three people to fuck off.
My PlayStation four goes to so and so, my, uh, my DS games go to so and so. Uh, these, these hard drives need to be burned without anyone looking at what's on them.
So, we drive off about, I'd say about five minutes behind, a good, a good, and okay distance, but enough to still trail.
I've got the GPS from his phone.
I make no effort for them, to make it easy for them to trail me.
And I pointed out why that was completely against what the plan was, but sure, go ahead.
Well, this is completely against the plan anyway.
Was there a plan?
Well, yeah, that was one, and then everyone-
I don't know at this point, I, I really don't know.
Well, it's fairly obvious, like, I, if he's there with her, he's able to protect her whilst we are still a little bit behind.
So, he's gonna protect her from the people that aren't going to attack?
Yes.
If they don't attack, then good.
That was the plan, I'm just going to have dinner. I tell her to hold on tight and we, we take off to a steakhouse somewhere in the city. Kinda nice is, like, I don't know, looking at like a hundred and some odd dollars for a meal. For the two of us for a meal, not a piece for a meal.
Fuck, hell.
Uh, yeah, I drive there, if you want me to roll anything, I will.
Uh, no, pretty much you take her out for dinner. She enjoys it, you can tell she enjoys it. Um, you could also tell that she's very plainly taking you for a ride. He doesn't even have anything to take for a ride.
Yeah. He doesn't have a ride, he has a-
I mean, unless he's taking his ride.
Are you talking about, like, for the food? Like, she's just taking it, oh, yeah.
That's fine. She has no intention of doing anything else.
Yeah.
So, do we notice anything while trailing them?
Uh, only perception, perception, awareness.
Yep.
Do we get any, like, bonus because this is like part of the plan and totally not improvised?
Nope.
Shit. You guys can also roll, it's fine.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just, uh, making those things.
I'm, I'm checking my phone.
I'm just trying to fucking find alertness on this thing. There it is. Wait, you said alertness or awareness?
Uh, awareness.
Perception awareness.
One, found most crypt fail.
Uh, and I'm guessing Harm is not looking around, he's just focused on his- I, I'm looking at the GPS and, on my phone, a- and not really paying attention otherwise. Okay. You notice that there is a car watching you, Jim?
That's unfortunate. Uh, what kind of car? Tense it windows, people inside?
There is three people inside, uh, one of them is an old elderly man.
I knew that was coming. I knew that was coming, the second you say, you said, I, you see a car watching, I'm like, it's probably us, but I'll let him keep going.
Well, I got, I got kinda confused because we, we have like a truck, not a car, but-
We have a SUV.
It doesn't matter.
Whatever they're called.
It's a good thing they're not being conspicuous or anything like that.
I mean-
I, I just imagine we're sitting down in the shop and I'm looking, looking out the window and see them staring back at me. Just like-
Just staring, literal eye contact, just-
Just the three of you staring.
You can see from the Keegan where you look from and just thumbs up, like-
No, you see the two of them staring and the third one going.
No, that's how he can see because of the phone light.
Yeah, lights up the face.
All right, after the, uh, meal concludes, um, so where do you want me to drop you off at?
Um, aren't we gonna go back to your place or?
Well, well, I mean, I'd probably be heading back there tomorrow, I had some business to take care of in the city later tonight, but, uh, I mean, do you really, I mean, you don't have a change of clothes, like, there's, there's nothing there for you.
You, you stink and you're not welcome.
Got it. A G most awkward where you could see that you're not gonna come back.
I mean, you can, you can come back, uh, when we go back, if you want me to pick you back up, but, um, there's nobody there now, so.
She says, all right, drop me off at my apartment.
Okay, I asked for the address and then we get off and we go to her apartment.
Okay, you go to the apartment? And I'm guessing, uh, Leo and everybody is following.
We are being so undercover that it's very obvious that we are undercover.
Well, it's not like the second they leave, I leave, it's-
No, like, three seconds after, I get it, it's fine.
No, it's like the second they leave, I leave, and then I realize you're not following me and stop and stand there and, and look at you and then look at them. And then look at you and then look at them. And then you get up and we leave.
Yeah.
I like to think that you guys went into the restaurant with you guys, with, with them.
Literally sat to the next booth over.
With your menus up, up high, like, trying to be stealthy.
Us trying to do some, some voices like, yes, I would like your finest, cheapest wine, please.
And then Harm going, you're an idiot.
Turn around, snap a few photos.
What's the matter, good sir?
Dude, you're an idiot.
I am just a mechanic.
Oh, no, they do that, we go to the next place.
No, we don't.
But, yeah, I drop her off at her-
Harm does do that.
I drop her off and I'm actually gonna roll this, not, not for them, but for anybody else. Got it. Um-
Well, what?
Uh,
Are, are you trying to get, uh, to, to lose a tail again?
No, I'm trying to see if anybody other than you is following.
I mean, we are also, should we also?
Yeah, now the question is, can I keep up with you trying to lose a tail?
I'm not trying though.
He's not trying to lose, he's just spotting if there is one.
Alright, okay. Yeah.
And to answer your question, no, you would not be able to keep up if I was trying to lose a tail. I can take my bike places, you can't take that SUV.
Fuck, I'm, I'm really bad at this, guys.
Uh, yeah. Guess I'll roll one too.
Well, look, I'll actually get up and look around.
I'll go ahead and spend a willpower as well to, so three.
Perception awareness?
Yep.
I'm, I can see more than Father Keegan just glancing over my phone.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm still very drunk, so in my defense, I don't know if that's a good defense, but it's my defense.
I had more to drink than you did.
Me too.
You can suck my dick.
So, yeah, assuming that there are no tails, I drop her off at her apartment and walk her out to the door and then, uh,
Oh, I was muted, sorry.
Oh.
Um, I will say, uh, there is nobody following you, but there is someone following the SUV.
Okay.
Hey.
Um, if it's specifically following me, I will turn out and do a circle, basically just a one block circle to see if it trails the pattern. Yeah.
It's like, we are so bad at tailing people that someone else is tailing us.
Well, part of our plan was to tail the tail if they were being tailed, so-
So, I guess this is part of the plan, if someone were to ask-
Worst plan ever.
No, because it's working.
So much as, as a, as a-
Guys, it's not stupid if it's working.
vague idea.
It's not working though. It's stupid because you actually think it's working.
We are, we, we wanted to catch someone looking for us and now we did.
No, we wanted to catch someone looking for the girl, and instead they're looking for us.
What you don't realize yet, what you don't realize yet is that the person that's looking for us right now is a cop because we're acting so suspiciously.
Yes. Uh, but if it's somebody looking for our SUV, it's probably somebody not related to the whole squid thing because we didn't take our SUV to the squid thing, it's probably one of the werewolves.
Yeah, in, either way, I'm saying this is a success, yes, by us having a-
You need to raise the bar for your idea of success.
I mean, okay. Okay, how about this, it's better than sitting around the house talking about shit that you don't wanna do.
Are you sure?
I'm very sure. Cause that accomplishes nothing.
If, if nothing else, then we know for now anyway that she's not being followed.
Yeah.
Or they're all set up in her apartment and the second that I close the door, she's gonna get jumped and murdered.
Yeah.
Which will be one of those problems.
Exactly, and if that's the case, then you are there and it's fine. And you can kind of-
No, not if, wait for me to leave, I'm not gonna like go inside her apartment and check to make sure everything is safe.
Could, no, why would you?
What was that?
You could project in there.
Yeah. What does that even mean?
Cast your mind out of your body.
I, no, 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 your mind stays in your body, that's where it belongs, that's its home.
Well.
I mean, that's not, that's a lot of room there for his, in his defense.
No.
Yes.
I mean, I could turn into like a little bird and fly inside or like a squirrel or something.
Sounds painful.
I'm definitely not doing that either, just because you can do something doesn't mean you should.
I don't understand.
That's physically destructive, of course, projecting your mind out of your body, something they just do all the time.
If you can do something, you should. I think you miss said that phrase.
See, he knows what he's talking about.
You guys are idiots. Oh, by the way, I've had my Bluetooth on like this entire time so that we could talk back and forth.
And we've all been ignoring you.
Yeah.
Do you just hear us arguing over it?
Yeah. Just like, you guys are, you guys have someone following you now, congratulations.
And you say this, you, you say that Harm's like, shut up, you're not here right now.
Yeah. How about you focus on trying to catch a ta- tail, I mean, we are conscious of it, you had one job and you're failing at it.
What are you talking, my job was to go to the apartment.
No, your job was to get, catch a tail and we just did it for you, you're welcome.
Never part of my job.
I'm sure that was your job.
Yes.
That, that had to have been your job.
That was the agreed upon notion that we had and that you apparently did not.
And Doc, we actually are having this conversation over Bluetooth.
And she's probably looking at you like you're an idiot.
No, she's on the back of a bike.
Yeah, he probably has like a throat mic or something.
Each time you say bike, I just imagine like a old school, she has bicycle, yeah.
Motorcycle.
Yeah, like, duh, 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 she's, she's in the basket, like, this is the worst day ever. Like, what the fuck is this?
I posted a picture of it way back when we started.
Yeah, yeah, I know, but each time you say bike, I envision that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, so, yeah, who noticed the tail that's on them?
Um, you and Leo. As well as Harmon's, actually, yeah.
The second we, we notice, I, I turn the vehicle and do the, uh, bike on block circle to see if they're still following.
Can I see a registration on the car? Uh, it is not a car, it is a motorcycle, uh, but you cannot. As soon as you do that, uh, it stops. Doesn't follow you.
Okay, so it keeps on driving fast?
Is it following me then?
No. I'm trying to grab a video of it on my phone as, as it's pulling away. Okay.
Oh, probably because that's an obvious thing to do if you're being tailed, is to circle around, so.
Is there a, uh, person, is it a big build, small build, what kind of bike is it?
Jet black, uh, leather spikes on, um, on these boots. Um, huge skeleton-esque, um, uh, motorcycle helmet. Black gloves with spikes on them. So, completely nondescript is what you're saying. Yep.
Any, any gang affiliations, like, does, does the leather jacket have like a thing on it, like a?
Nope. Completely black.
Ooh, that's fun. Uh, did I just report that he pulled away after, after, uh, tried to lose him or tried again to follow?
Yeah, I can see him.
So, after I circle around, does he continue following again?
Nope.
I mean-
Yeah, where, where does he go? Where does he go?
Goes down the street, takes a right.
Let's follow him, let's follow him. Good boy, buddy, buddy, get, follow that car.
I, I will call out the-
Out the window and starts running.
Okay.
I'll call out that, that he took a, took a right on such and such, how close am I to her apartment right now?
Pretty close, about three more blocks.
All right, I step on it till you get to her apartment quickly.
Okay.
Uh, I will follow the motorcycle.
Yeah.
Say that with a lot of trepidation, I, uh, I, I just turned to you guys and say, get ready for some shit.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm sure Buddy will, uh, let us know if this guy is-
Can you just follow it from, you know, the distance, try not to-
I'm going to, but he may not like that.
Well, if the dog can, well, the dog can't really talk back to you, whatever, I'll get to you guys' location as fast as I can after I drop her off.
We'll update you.
Do, do I have a mental connection with the dog? I forgot him. Like, you can, do I know what he's, okay, so I know nothing from this, from distance?
Not from a distance, but when he comes near you, he can, he can tell you thoughts and images and things like that.
Hmm.
That's how you know where he got shot and all that.
Okay.
It's like a mental connection, but-
Cool, okay.
Yeah, we'll follow this guy and not gonna make it obvious, gonna try and keep back, but he's probably watching us too, so.
If, if nothing else, it's very obvious about the giant spirit, the dog running after.
Yeah, yeah, he'll probably see that.
Uh, uh, hang on, I, I did say this is the smaller version, so this is a normal size bloodhound dog, it's not the-
Not a hellhound.
Exactly, in case you're, uh, muted. We can see you saying stuff.
Oh, I was just saying that it will be completely conspicuous and, you know, he's only gonna see his spirit dog chasing after him, yeah, so.
Hey, 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 shut it.
You're the one that just told me I wasn't, shut it.
Yeah.
Your fault.
How, how about, uh, uh, like, in the middle, I just agree with everything I say and do?
Not a chance in hell.
Shit, okay, I tried.
How about we stop messing around on this stupid chase thing and go hunt some actual, you know, squids?
Can one of you guys like blow out one of his tires? When the time comes?
I, I, I pull out my gun and say, well, I guess so, do you want me to do that?
Oh, my god, no.
Start rolling my window down?
No, no.
But, are you saying this next to her, Ben?
We are on a Harley.
Yeah, exactly, that's my point.
Throat bikes exist for bikes, dude, that's why they're around to, for motorcycle helmets and the thing and the like.
Yeah.
There's no way she'd be able to hear unless-
Okay, well, if, uh, for as long that she is not, isn't listening in, oh, I'm bait, well, that sucks, so, okay. In that case, go ahead. Yep.
I mean, if, if we, if we need to slow his, this vehicle, we can, we have the capability, but I prefer to just-
Wait, do you guys actually have him in sight now? Can you see him?
Yeah, he's about just a couple minutes ahead.
Okay, well, let's, let me get her dropped off and get to you so that we're not confronting him separated.
Yeah, yes, make sure that-
Want me to shoot him or not?
Not yet.
Talk to him, right? Or at least question him before shooting him.
You guys are really confusing me, you know that? Ever since I woke up this, this afternoon, everything you guys have said has been stupid.
Wait, do you want to offer any input here, Tom?
I've offered it, but it's all stupid.
There you go, Doc, I rolled you a, uh, a drive to get there fast, drop her off and then get back to them.
Yep, you, uh, are dropping her, her off very quickly.
Get the fuck out. Tell her, I tell her if she, uh, needs anything or if anything bad shit starts to happen to, uh, give me a call, this number and give her a card with my number on it.
That's strange, why would bad shit start happening?
Yeah, why would you say things like that?
I don't know, her workplace just got shot up, I mean-
That sounds like someone who intends bad shit to happen, which is-
Taste it, nods and shuts the door in your face. I think you got a good chance with her, man.
Yeah.
I'm not, it's not the point.
Wait, just give her two hundred grand.
Why would I want crabs? I go downstairs, I get on the bike and I start high tailing it to where they are.
Okay.
You always doing a drive rule or no?
No, you already made one, it's fine. Uh, you are following the-
Uh, you are following the, Leo, you are following the motorbike.
Yeah. Um. Does he start pulling any maneuvers, like trying to lose Faye or anything like that?
No, um, he actually goes down a side street.
I'm still watching for his plates.
Hey, guys.
He has no plates.
Um. What direction is he taking them in?
Uh, I recount every street that we've passed so far, the exact path. Like, head down Eleventh, take a left, follow that road for about two and a half miles, take a right, basically, his exact path.
Is he heading towards one of the, that apartment that we identified?
No.
Oh no, that's the apartment I just dropped her off, that's right.
Yeah.
Doc, what were you saying?
I was saying, he brings you down to a side street, leads you to a suburban area, and um. There's a bunch of houses everywhere. Entirely, entirely, no cars in the streets, no, no um, cars in the parking things. Just completely empty houses, all, all by.
This isn't a cool thing or anything.
Doc, as we're heading that way. I'm trying to snap some images of the motorbike that he's on, since it doesn't have any plates. Trying to find out, is this like a custom job that's been done by some, um. Just throwing the name out there because it's probably the only one that I've actually heard of, but like. Uh, if, if a place like Orange County Choppers or whatever does a custom bike for someone. They'll have like pictures of it on their website or things like that. Trying to kind of find out, trying to trace back where was this bike customized, maybe then I can find out who it was customized for.
Yeah, it's definitely a chopper, by the way, it's, it's a, looks like a Harley Davidson chopper almost, um. And it does look like it's, it does look like it is um. Custom built. It sort of looks a little bit like this.
Nice, I remember watching that bike being built. Oh, you crit, nice job.
You search for the custom choppers, you find nothing.
Damn.
That's disappointing.
A crit and I still can't find it.
There's a specific reason for that.
To be fair.
Because of that. Give me seconds, hold on.
To be fair, Casey, you wouldn't find anything on mine either.
But yours isn't like a heavy duty custom job?
No, yeah, I just did all the work, he just did all the work himself.
Yeah, but something like that with the whole skull motif and all of that is usually something that's professionally done.
Yeah, cause they'll keep track of it, cause they wanna advertise what they've done, their portfolio and like.
I can't find the, the stupid thing.
Which tells me he just might have, might straight up be a biker mage, which actually sounds pretty cool.
Or a biker demon.
We're leaving if that's the case.
You watch as this man on the chopper stops and it just. Skids and makes that really high pitched, you know, that, that. Sounds that you make when you stop really short. And he twists it and turns towards you.
Uh.
He then takes out what looks to be a plastic sword.
Uh, gun, guns.
No, I look at his aura real quick. If I can read it, it would.
Romi, Romi aura, okay.
I'm using time to speed up my, my perception as well.
Roll that first and then roll aura.
Okay. So, speed of perception.
Guns up.
Mm-hmm. I'm taking out the prayer book.
Uh, difficulty, what is, what would that be, time two?
Make us not die, please.
Or time one, to speed up your own perception.
Usually perceptions is one. But if you're affecting something to make it better, it would be a two.
Okay.
Usually.
So, difficulty with time two would be five?
Ca- correct.
Yeah, with my thing, it is a watch, so. Um. Fantastic, that doesn't do anything.
That is not fantastic.
Well, you're up your perception, but. But, try, you can still do the aura thing, it might be too late before he does anything, but.
Yeah, um.
Uh, shut the fuck up, bud. Sorry.
Difficulty five, two to read his aura.
Okay. Let me look at the auras again. Uh.
This is a cool bike.
I remember sending you it.
Yeah, I don't know who it is. Uh, his aura says that he is a changeling.
Okay, so that would be, uh, if I remember correctly, it'd be bright and sparkling.
Yes. Something like that.
And we uh.
I see that, and he's pulled out a sword, he's probably pulled out a big fucking chimerical sword. So I slam.
He's pulled out a huge, uh, plastic sword, like, one of those, like. Have you ever seen, um, uh, you know, in Final Fantasy?
Right.
Uh, the big buster sword that.
Oh, okay.
Plastic ones.
He's got a really big sword. And I slammed the steering wheel left to try to.
What would, what would we think about changelings? I mean.
I don't even know if I'd have time to say.
Yeah, no, no, just in general, like people, like tradition mages.
Some mages have very good relationships with changelings, others have very bad ones.
Yeah, but for the, for example, technocracy thinks they're mining nuisance that are, that are dying out. But would tradition mages, mages have the same?
Depends on the tradition and depends on the mage, I guess. Uh, someone like the Order of Hermes might show a little bit more respect towards Faye, cause they've been around for so long. Um, whereas.
You have no idea why Faye would want to come after you, but.
Well, we've pissed it off, obviously.
Somehow, um, but, either way. What you see now is as he takes out this sword, he then reaches out and takes something like a. What looks to be like a plastic baggie with something in it, and holds it out with one arm. So he has no arms on the bike.
Okay.
Well, not in this form anyway.
And then he then. It starts going by itself, straight towards you.
Uh, I stop.
What?
Push on the brakes and stop.
Can't.
That'll be.
As he continues moving.
Hang on, hang on.
This is happening in a very, this is happening in a very flash second.
I, I've got.
Like I see this sword and I slam the brakes.
I've got the gun up in panic and I'm shouting, dude, this is not cool. I don't know how effective that will be as a deterrent, but uh, if, if he is a changeling that believes in, in things being cool, maybe it will stop him.
What? This is not cool, uh, this, this is why I'm doing it, shit.
This is not artful, this is not fantastical, this is very banal.
Damn it.
So at this, at this point, I'm gonna say, what the hell's going on? What are you all talking about?
A guy's attacking us with a plastic sword.
Uh, so you watch as. His bike turns into this. God damn it, why isn't?
It turns into nothing, god damn it, got it?
No.
That's how like my enemies, being nothing.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Ha, haha, I'm scared.
His sword, really not cool, turns into this. Into a real sword.
And he's still not stopping?
Still not stopping, his, the plastic bag in his, in his. Uh, in his hand, turns into.
I guess a shield.
A net.
Into a pumpkin.
I really think we should be driving and not stopping.
Is this the Headless Horseman?
And he has no head.
Okay, yeah, so I see that, and I, from zero to a hundred. Uh, reverse.
On him?
This shit.
Yeah, could, could, could I, could I with forces nitro?
You can't nitro.
Reverse. Why not?
Reverse it.
Reverse it faster.
Yeah, like I throw it into reverse, start slamming and the second the motion hits, that's when you would.
Exactly, like, yeah, extra speed.
Increase the acceleration, yeah.
Exactly, yeah, like jet boost.
I thought you were adding nitrous to this car.
We're not technocrats anymore.
No.
Monday.
Alright.
Um.
In fact, if you can, just make the car fly, fuck this.
See, seeing him do that, I'm shooting him in the pumpkin.
This is nice, we're dealing with the thing that created the jack-o'-lantern. Yay.
Yay.
Yeah, this is him.
This is fantastic.
Do you recognize the, the leather jacket and everything like that now?
I, I, I'm doing fantastic with my rolls today, I am really loving it.
So, it doesn't go any faster than the regular one, this horse is going extremely fast. Un, just unremarkably fast.
Unremarkably? Okay, cool.
Alright.
At this point, I would say bail out fucking van, cause it's probably gonna explode here in a second.
Alright, you said unremarkably fast, it's fine.
If I.
You already said it.
Remarkably fast.
I know what you meant, but not what you said, it's fine. It's fine.
Uh, you're shooting the pumpkin, okay. Uh, no, reroll that, because the difficulty is gonna be a little bit more, cause you're in a moving car.
Oh, okay.
And, yeah, and you're aiming it something that someone's holding instead of this person.
And on horseback.
Right, what's the difficulty?
Going very fast. Difficulty's gonna be eight, DP mod's gonna be negative one.
I was hoping to actually fire before we got up to speed, so that I wasn't actually. Uh. Nope.
The gun goes off, but it misses completely.
Hey, at least you didn't botch.
God, would a mind effect even work against a changeling?
Not often, sometimes.
The hell is going on?
They are humans.
The horse, the horse doesn't have a lot of willpower, can I attempt to mind the horse into like, tripping or falling over or just stopping?
Sure, uh, that would be a mind three effect.
I'm mind three, nevermind.
Uh, how far am I off when all this commotion starts blaring into my ear?
Um, you're not that far off. You're about two blocks away, god damn it.
Yeah, you, you, you're hearing me shout, dude, this is not cool, not cool, not.
So, so I just start accelerating faster and faster and faster.
I do have a last minute thing if we need to absolutely get out of here. I will.
We absolutely need to get out of here.
I could just freeze time.
Okay, we don't need to abs- absolutely get out of here.
That's what I was saying, if we absolutely need to get out of here, I can freeze time.
Let's, let's wait for one of us dying and then.
Okay, just one.
Yes, and let's hope it's not.
If he destroys the van, then.
I'll be right back again, god damn. So Casey, what uh, I'm, I'm guessing would be life like three effect to, to stone skin?
Yourself or someone else?
Yourself.
Two, usually.
You're just hardening your skin and your muscle density.
Two, okay, I'm gonna do that while I'm driving.
Don't fall down the drive.
What? No, crazy.
Yeah, getting stoned while driving is not a good idea.
Yeah.
Is there a way to do that, um, I don't know, is that coincidental or is that vulgar?
Usually depending on how far you're going with it.
Like, are you callousing all of your skin? Cause that's pretty fucking gross and vulgar. But if you're just increasing density, then.
Uh, just increasing density.
Okay, I'm back.
If it was me running it, I would say you could get a point or two of armor as a coincidental, any more than that's gonna be vulgar as hell.
Making yourself armor?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's trying to thicken his, thicken his skin, basically.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Stone skin type thing.
Would changelings count as witnesses?
No.
Thankfully, I'm not there yet. Uh, what would the uh, DP and difficulty for this be? It's life two, then it should be difficulty, um, five? Five or four?
Uh, five.
Three successes.
So you get. Two armor.
Sweet. Just good complaining, considering I'm gonna do something kinda crazy.
What, Austin's doing something crazy? What you talking about?
So what are you guys doing as this uh, this thing is charging? You're backing up real quick.
Uh.
I'm charging it.
Wait, you're here?
Well, no, I, I'm, I'm accelerating, I'm like two blocks away, I'm just accelerating faster and faster to get to them.
To get here.
Cause you said this was empty, right? Empty street, nothing around anywhere, right?
Dead empty, all these houses too.
Yeah, I was just going faster and faster and faster.
Um, could I, yeah, could I attempt to mind the horse? And, oh no, I already said that, can I attempt to trip it with forces two?
Uh.
Like maybe slow them? Oh no, could I time, time, I'll just use time to slow them.
Sure. Hey, can one of you? Can one of you guys control matter?
Nah.
Okay.
What would that, what would that matter?
Heh, 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 eh, heh, heh. Shut up.
Casey's the villain now.
Yeah.
What do you mean now?
Or prime two, no, that would be matter, wouldn't it? I couldn't create just a primal, could I? Yeah, I figured, damn.
Uh, so you're gonna try and trip them, or you're gonna slow them down, so.
I'm slowing them, yeah.
Okay, so time three, um, because you're affecting two things. Actually, no, you're not affecting two things, I'm sorry.
You only need to slow down the horse.
Yes.
He's like faster, he's like. Fast.
So roll that then and.
Yeah, uh, difficulty five.
Okay, I'm going to use a quintessence and willpower.
Okay.
I'm going to do something quite similar.
Yeah, I'm gonna cast a spell, shift my pants.
No.
Make, okay, it's brown?
I'm going to correspondence three on the horse to increase slightly the distance. Basically elongate the distance between him and us.
Nice.
Okay.
Uh, so he's going slower and going um.
Five successes for slowing him down.
Um. Uh, is there any DP mod?
Uh, no.
Uh, difficulty is gonna be five, correspondence three. There, difficulty? I would just said five, didn't I?
Yes.
Nice.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, I got five as well.
So you watch as not only the horse, but also the rider on top of him slows down. And also a large, it's sort of like the uh panoramic shot. Um, where you can, it just sort of.
You just see it zooming out.
Yeah, it sort of stretches the street. And it's still, it's got a long road to run.
Still screaming at it that this is not cool, what's what the hell's going on?
Like, that's good, keep him going slow, keep him going slow.
By the way, we're driving in reverse.
Does he answer me whenever I tell him that this is not cool and ask him what the hell's going on?
I mean, if he's not, then it's just very rude.
Are you asking the?
I'm shouting it out the window at him, yeah.
Not cool.
Dude, this is not cool, what the hell's going on?
You watch as the pumpkin moves to a a smiling face. And then it opens and closes and you hear a chattering sound.
Okay, that's a little cool.
Still not cool.
Um, could could I use forces to ignite the flame that's inside the pumpkin? Can I make it explode?
What flame?
The inside of pumpkin.
Uh, ju- just the pumpkin.
It's not like a Halloween pumpkin with.
It's probably not.
Jack-o'-lantern.
Okay.
I think it's just his actual head.
It's a pumpkin.
Yeah. But the horse is flaming. Could I, could I make him catch fi- fire from that flame?
Sure. Roast pumpkin.
Yeah, gonna burn the pumpkin away.
That seems pretty demonic, don't you think? I think it needs to feel the wrath of God.
Yeah, right, that's, that's a.
Oh, yeah, God's really on your time, oh my god, someone else.
Roll for bullet time. Yeah, only got one. Unfortunately, yeah, well, I will powered it, so.
Yeah.
You didn't, you didn't say it.
Uh, okay, I'll check it back. It's not crucial, thankfully.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna willpower this though. So what's the difficulty to ignite the dude and his pumpkin head?
Difficulty six.
Even though I'm using my sip lighter for the forces.
Difficulty five.
Yeah. A four.
Okay. You watch as the entirety of this sky goes up in flames. It's still going.
Like.
Yeah.
Power of Christ compensates you bitch, shit, I just made it worse, guys.
It just.
No, everything is on fire.
Even the sword is on fire, in fact.
Ah, shit.
I don't think he minded that.
We're, we're about to buy. You're just, just coming up to the block.
I I would argue that he would see the kinda like little like little fire, just boom.
Accelerating faster.
I will try a last minute, just send out a a mind read. Uh, on the Headless Horseman, just use telepathy to to say there's clearly a misunderstanding, let's talk about this, lock the damn sword and please let's talk. He's attempting to anyway.
That's, that's what I'm shouting as he's doing that.
And I I am trying to, trying to talk him down, uh, apart, you know, like.
Okay, roll me mind.
I mean, that took a lot of, that was cool, right?
This is what that'd be mind two to send someone a message?
Yes.
Okay, so difficulty five, and I'll go ahead and spend a quintessence and willpower. So four. Five successes. And that's my last quintessence.
Okay.
Can I roll like a manipulation?
I am, I'm.
Roll me a manipulation expression, yeah.
I'm trying to be sincere to him, not just trying to get him to stop so we can fire at him.
Yeah, but you also want him to stop.
D- DP mod?
DP mod negative one.
Difficulty? Difficulty?
Difficulty seven.
So would mine be a charisma then?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, cuz I'm trying to be sincere, would that be expression or empathy or?
Empathy.
Okay.
Okay, the role is cool.
And would uh, would trust within us give me benefit here?
Yes, cuz you're being sincere.
I'm not necessarily being unsincere.
One DP.
I'm just.
Uh, and you said.
Are you, is harm legitimately afraid?
Uh, he he legitimately just wants this guy to be cool, it's like, just dude, what the hell, stop.
Yeah, let's start, let's start with words and not flaming swords.